You can tell me about accounting for this. From Monday, you're coming to the second time stand by your chair. Our Father in heaven, we come before you. Praying for your continued love, praise, and God's presence in all of the living. God, we thank you for the blessings and the opportunities that you give each and every one of us. We love you and we thank you. We pray today that he will take us by the hand and walk with this love with these of us in reason every step when we say. Well, we pray for your healing hands to touch us all. Please bless us and God bless America. Amen.
I pray that the Lord has a blessed soul. To the Republican, for which stands one nation, my God, indivisible, the better religion and just people. On the day of his life, I highly praise his name, parents, who want to say, my God, who want to be here.
Next up on the agenda is our service to them.
My name is Amanda Griffin. I live in Malachi County, David, in the north, in Camp Woods. And I'm here today as a partner of the Hill Chrisfield Alliance. The counter leader with Hill Chrisfield Alliance is they are the organization that brings together that first coalition of. To preserve the unique character of. Part of that includes open spaces, preserving our dark skies, the clean of the. And I'm here today as a partner with Hill Chrisfield Alliance to let you know about a resource that we have available. And talk to you a little bit about it. We are living in a time of large scarcity and declines. And coupled out with the growth and development in our area, which is our duty, that most effective part of the state. And one of the largest futures of water for redevelopment is being maintained. Two stations, I make myself an almost twenty year water work, landscape water consultant. And so I know personally the people on the mountain, that's why I get that. In a development, in a neighborhood, and then facial answer. So I'm standing at Hill Chrisfield Alliance on a resource document from homeowners associations. That need to go off of this together with Hill Chrisfield Alliance to promote waterized landscaping. In homeowner associations, CCRs, and landscape guidelines. The purpose of the document is to educate existing organizations on options and technology that are available. To conserve water in a landscape. But this something that goes a step further, there's a lot of resources out there that exists. I hope it goes a step further by providing specific language. That allows HOAs to adopt the language to amend their existing rules or incorporate them into the rules that they are new to them. This established in their, their limits. So it's, I'm bringing this information to you today just so that you know about the resource. And know that counties don't have a huge amount of control over what subdivisions do. But you do have certain touch points, meaning property is getting planted or subdivision to be proposed. So I would consider offering this kind of resource, a voluntary resource to eat parts. When planning or subdivisions were developed for catering. And I also want to let you know that I'm available for you about how we as a resource to any existing homeowners associations. That are wishing to learn more about. And then there is just being more, be more in line with our large scarcity environment that we live today. That's all I have to say. We both have our copies of the documents that I hope to give support and those are available. And I see your time this morning.
Thank you for having me today, commissioners. I'm here on behalf of the volunteer fire department. And I believe our chief, Joe, is in the smoking start mission, and she, Judge Mitchell. And we are, one, we're talking about the ESD, emergency services district. And it did not get voted in in November. From what I understand, the valley did not, didn't ask me about it. It passed, and even if it passed in seven hours, more than a percent. And so we were not aware that Savinoff is trying to do an ESD. And food for the government to do it. So our chiefs were not informed, and you know, we just, we just didn't know about it. So we went around talking to voters and had a petition. And asking the voters and the property owners what they thought. And I got, we have, we usually have about two hundred and fourteen voters, I got under the eight signatures, just in three days. And the voters aren't for it. So we wanted to present our paperwork. To commissioner or the county commissioner, like I said, today, and not on very good that. We are not interested in showing you ESD and something.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Diana, middle of the room. I actually wasn't going to ask to speak in this portion of the agenda this morning, but. When I saw all of the fire department personnel here this morning. I felt like there was probably something going on with emergency services. I knew that the fire department specifically about the fire department would be coming back to you at some point. And I guess this time now because they won't be on the ballot and remember. To try again to be another property taxing entity, which really I don't understand how this commissioner's court would actually believe. That there is a need for an ESD in the valley. We need to have funds in your budgets to keep very easily, we are the pain to help your fire departments. When I lobbied against the ESD last year, it wasn't because I don't value the services that they provide. It isn't because I don't believe that the people that are involved, those fire departments are not doing a valid service for our communities. They give their time, their energy, their resources, and I applaud them. But I was lobbying against what you know, the property taxing entity. And I'm very, very curious, given the comments we've just made by the people. Is how is the community of Canova, ready wells? I think those are the only two that we've done, how each, how do they decide? What they want to be involved in? Somebody just gets to say, we're in these, we can never, but we don't put up enough conversation with them. They're unincorporated, so who makes that decision for them? And they clearly do not want to be part of a Savinoff ESD or the valley fire department ESDs. They may have other forces and puts in conflict on this commissioner's court to respect that community, that fire department, and those voters. Thank you.
Thank you for the speakers on the citizens communication, so we'll go down to the. Free, that's considering act on the table events. You have the more you events of May twenty seventh and June ninth consideration. Are there any additions or protections to those meetings? Given with your progress, with your shaking, there's your token discussion. On favor say aye, pose, want to be prepared. I give the floor to consider an act on the update of community funded projects. Represented by policies, countries, and we're talking about. We have the deal others and also Pearson right to bring us up to pay.
First of all, thank you guys for allowing this space today. So while people are going to really discuss, I'd like to go over our heated, heated funding projects over the course of the past. There's so, keep in mind, while some of this money paid and allocated in sort of years' budget. Some of them, some of that funding doesn't then make an allocation to the state. It's also done in coordination with our office along with whatever state which one will do those projects. I'm also going to have your similar way providing that date on the worm, so I'm gonna let him go with that and.
Thank you. Good morning. So last week, Congress, we got started carrying back those people calls down to launch everything by five, we used to verify. This person, so they have more are based inside. This semester, it was simply set the operation hold in the next six months. The government's all is related, it's the top priority, the partners are introducing by tires and stuff just to work that. So we plan to have our students all come for creation. He's the word to you to run the farmers, the children, the most, that's city, there is that. This legislation is supported by nearly every good life, and have regulation, and taxes as well. As we've been able to screw them eradicated in the United States protected by the Texas, the Mexico, our mother, the Polacra, and very good. Only seven hundred miles from the United States where poverty yesterday, he spent five cattle enforcement, and vice versa. Per border, of course, in the United States on a annual, like, two years of a big city. This is serious threats are last, but by the end of the year, we can die, and anybody will choose to prosecute it. That's why I designated our production location, I believe, by foreign management. Number one, exciting investment source, financing, supply, direction, Mexico, but I agree with them. To secure ourselves on board, create a peace arrangement, for the ones that please, reporting action, action would fast move order direction. Very vast, much of the pot, very, very, very emergency supply, stop. Or launching aggressive variety of issue upwards, starting with lead, so we have more air, there's a little dispense throughout the body. Find the law from the United States search to national areas of draft, partner the universe across state taxes and education. All right, you know, but I bet by far as another Congress, you go see there's. This is not just about battle, there are other things to do, that should, that's our funding behind it, without a gang rangers, law, by the state government. Congressmen in our office understands the state, by any part of the entire operation, this ministry.
So I'm gonna go over just a couple of them. Please keep in mind, I'm only going to mention the ones that are specific to what happened in our county. So this is not going to include the, or your mark, so I think for school district or the intercepts. So the first one, at five twenty three, we allocate five point four, or we could have nine, one, three, in front of the success. This is going to base the project through the first phase, so now this is also in coordination with middle, with the mill Rio. Or you involve three families. So that first five, we can formally draw our allocation, that was allocated towards additional. Allocated for software upgrades along with the equipment for some of those jobs. I believe some of that money also looking at the allocation of radio, so those radios are valued, you can add to ten thousand. Were able to secure funding for all of our first responders, throughout the entire money. And so that's going to be the, begin that first one. Yeah, okay, five twenty four, as I mentioned, it's the biggest project, we allocated four point five million. Now, with that allocation, it was additional equipment that was going to be this part of the nine one one traffic system. Along with additional cameras that would be placed in other sets of companies. I know the state of Texas said that would get some funding, so I'm listening, so it's specifically for like, federal, your large allocation, she's not on my office. It is also being made aware, this is a huge project and huge undertaking. And please understand, there's research that asks you to go to. As we consistently research this project, what we have now, that the main base all, created equipment, all of the trade units were just magazines to it. The main base all is going to use bodily additional staff, and that's brought distribution, considering the impact that. The additional D A C resources that have been placed here in region, so all of that provides and. Impacts an additional strain on those communication workers, so we have something to make illustration, we have to be able to put it back that there is a series we. Any sessions. And the next one will be K O C. Now, that specific funding was allocated to the state of Texas, so I had that twenty two five million dollar allocation. And that, I know, boards have been working hard with, to help on that, so that's just a part there. We have also worked with the USDA and testing and afterlife for both. Yeah, one million dollar allocation were of one twenty four. And that is currently in coordination with the city of Valty and testing and afterlife, all with the S D A. I also liked the name for five twenty sixth budget. And we did select, Congress, we did all this, did select the project for the local extension, where we helped young. Now, that project is still currently awaiting a full committed remark, so I can't say that's right now, what the allocation for that property would be. I think those pretty much did, imposing all of these projects, whether like, we're doing last night, you need all the family and. So y'all have a question, what would you have?
I don't have a question, no comment about, there's some spirit one, but they. Steps saying what spirit one did is the last. I can mean, um, the Congress, we call, and strides and great deal, maybe that whole way. Up in the month, one, airport, place, and the bottom, we can just place the. Thank you for leadership, Charles. Question. Put now with the five, that's considering act on the final approval of the recent addition of two fourteen in the United States. And there's in fact, here we get a criminal trial last week. Was the addition of the fresh, the meaningless, the only. On that, they might, we don't have a sign, but they already did, they don't have to give a sign, he said. Question.
That was, you talked about the water, you know, there. Assign more water meter, but now, I'm like, it's like.
This, we're resubstantially, they already had a leader, so we're not adding any. So that's something that the gracious, the two, Congress, you choose at a moment, recently, in, they think the bars is totally out. But this is bigger subdivision, it's a rapid, so it's making official four, four, five, three times, those are already there on the ground. They are already part of this. This is the five day third track, you have something, right, then, three points. And, I don't know, which were fired the last day. I'll make a motion, I'll leave. Have a motion back, permission parties getting the final proof, was there a second? Mr. Eagle, discussion. All in favor say aye. Pose, when you carry nine hundred and six, for considering act upon the final approval of the end, has to say. This was the subdivision, Dennis, in Atlanta, off of three forty nine, south of US ninety. I'm completely beyond it, it's a program invited in three months, and they need to see the environment for the, for the area for public forest buying, separate system. Forests are going to be divided by, you know, loss by the pressure now of the name. First, you can meet, Dr. Your margin, Chuck, quick. Mr. Nolan is your second. Mr. Eagle, discussion. All in favor say aye, pose, once you compare the sanctity. I'm the recipient, is considering act upon adopted residents, supporting the county, having a communication department.
Good morning, good morning, you have impacted, according to the adoption, you've got this. As a new suggestion plan, for the county. That will include investment companies, city, without the city, the San Antonio, the Chinese, the. Going through the, to the consideration as well. As the suggestion plan is a damage building requirement of service agreement, land projects, and programs. This monster is premetered, maybe one beggars long. Huge endeavor, now this was taken on by nobody brands, that is basically the whole part of this. There's really no one in the, as the resources are, to do this individual plan. We, we did that in two thousand twelve, the call was involved in that, and we all began on that project. Their own positive sample, or renewal. But they changed the deadlines, uh, with the real trip updated, these four projects and things like that, that, that time. They'll be changing format, which was very wide for being in this region, from state. Key County, just know how a year, a few years, did the, the real, the shares. Those are going through that, which is successful, you know, that kind of thing. People say it was very, from that, they don't want, they have, the state of Texas probably wanting to push it. In a old school, decided to be in that few minutes, and this pretty much does that. This process, and the positive of this plan, that gives us a little power. As we are in fine hazards and mitigation ways to, to remedy those. This is one that, survey is put out at a hundred and thirty nine responses, we got. With that, the two most high, I think, the current server of the helmet that. Service showed, extremely and drought with top two elements that were surveyed, although this of the, of the hazards. Those are very long, mitigating yes, however, we know that, we look in some cases. There was some discussion, and, and how you hear that, feeling centers, other things that. That you, you learn to do that, drought, you know, that's a probably, we all live in that, we know about that. But actually, this is a direction forward on the kind of mitigating of that five assets. Part of this is, I guess, in these, I will say unfortunately, this was five, you've been finding it, you can't do this. Who have had the limitation, these projects. Are based on, we have facilities that are version on a national scale, or. Which, or whatever, and whatever that event, they typically release those funds. And they are an open for application. But we had that shovel ready project, and most networks are not only population, we have some local. But I don't know how many areas, but they call that money in the bank, it's waiting for that to happen. So that's typically not a large project or therapy. I think in larger cities have, have that such a looking. Small families, small communities, not much that we know. But that is the gift of finding a typical shovel wearing projects, which you have on books quickly. Even, but, uh, general, and obviously, I usually, I didn't see the role of this funding, uh, you know, there's. Still on top of those, in the, so, all the buildings building, they're doing that, and just.
Question, your part, of course. What's that, the mitigation plan for twenty twenty five, that, is that it, Mike?
Yes, the, the judge Mitchell has a copy, like, it's about that, they're on. On the phone, so we'll be here before, and you will come out, we get it soon. It will be here, on, obviously, during, whatever, copies will want to, whatever, come.
It's mentioning its goals, goals outlined, I mean, you have, I want to mention all the goals, and you have like, some of the goals that.
Yeah, so just, you have, this, yeah, so it has a survey. The drought, and since it's spring, you know. Whatever, hell, life, the thunderstorm, the wildfire, the swan, hazards, material, those were. Across again, and policy, on both ways, pretty much adaptable. Uh, that lower risk, and then failure, the point I go of software, the fact that everyone knows was in a kind of.
Original, original plan, uh, here's what's five years, starting in two thousand twelve.
Twenty five, the last one, twenty seven, twenty seven, any member, hospital, uh, this, twenty seven, two, we need. Wages like this one, this plan, you go about five years, yes, very, and it has to be reading, that the helping process will not change. When they go to that, so, for that, and so, oh, okay, this will be one of the, correct or bad. So in general, for the most, I'm saying, from two thousand twelve, playing, so, and so, the mind is huge. Size, and size, think, please.
They're all the same person.
This, exactly.
What you said, uh, thanks, part of you. So, Doc, in this first edition, you can enable us another time, you can help time keep alive.
Yes, we will be now, we're in that, we're in one, like, technology, we believe, we count, and what that.
Any other question? Back group. You found the rest of the presentation, uh, for us, and recognition of your apology presentation, is there a motion to do so? Mrs. Gold, you should say that, we should argue, discussion. All in favor say aye, I propose. Question, here is, thank you, I want you to put them. Well, this is out of number seven. And that's considering act upon the agreement, creating county, and the window, watch slide. For the project, construction grant, active data, college. So, you know, the history, what were you into, the, the, I am only intended on the agreement, which is a farm. I would basically, uh, the, the, um, screen. Well, the United coordinate the premium arms of powerful region, out there, the county states. For the last six months, of live on field work, side business, maybe, or dimension. We're here today in this with the county and the hundred period is playing. Regarding application activities, and questions to be thought about a grant. May have the deadline due to submit all this, it's June thirtieth, pretty close to the end. We're in a position, after this morning, we're in a position, head to submit the application by the end of the week. So you know, recall, there's a number of elements out there, that don't want to supply, the life plan. That is old, it's very age. That is old, deteriorated. In my capacity. The elements that were considering. Being funded with the grant is going in there and demolish the old groundwater storage back there. Thanks probably some fifty years old. It's in pretty poor condition. Uh, leaks is not dependable. For the residents of the valley states. Once that tank is demolished, we're going to construct. The proposal is to construct a hundred and thirty thousand gallon groundwater storage tank. So it's going to provide them. Dependability and also some additional capacity down the road. Well, simply replace the booster pump over there, uh. All these elements are resolved, uh. Some binding with some uh. Notification by D C E U for being out of quiet. So we're going to replace the pumps there with uh, two seven hundred and fifty hour permanent booster pumps. Be some of the ground typing. Be the new electrical operation to the point and controls. We're also planning on upgrading the coordination system out there. Formation facility out there, the elements of that coordination, filthy, uh. Need to upgrade, if they haven't been uh, upgraded in a minimum of years. So, this is going to be our grant. And it's all over the trust into maximum amount. They added a bit of cement for some night. So we got it, it's not updating, any punch with the. And at the end of the day, if the, going after bid, it would probably just be above budget. But you know, all this type of management makes up that difference. Or we can, we can each go the book, hanging down within the, within the dust. The hundred and three thousand gallons storage tank, the budget, budget is eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars. The demolition hold range. And it's added to the front, the ten hundred, the demolition, we left tonight, most right, forty nine thousand. Seven hundred and fifty young presented booster tanks. With all the piping and controls, two hundred thousand. Electrical upgrades for diamonds and toes, one hundred and fifty. The organization system of the eight, a hundred thousand. And then the day, the twenty hundreds or eighty hundred fifty five thousand. So. We have a agreement. That is, we can allow the different brand. We then according to Lloyd will send the project. Given. Basically, we look for a side, if we can have a county that will be responsible. All the whole was that. Like natural, uh, damage of the ramp, we play from three county. There's going to be made with three county. There will be not the location supportive of food, right? Uh. The valley county, there are no additional calls, we're with the project. From the grant. United county has a wetting and engineer. And all the construction plant respects the water, it's practical, it's made your duty to prove. And then my district report also have a large supply for where. Before this special make events. There's a large supply for operation, can reach in any any services, can produce. Press will be now be getting. In part, construction and application. The donation, the donation required, uh, to the task division. You should have found here, I hope you see, it's just the guy, but it. Let me know what's part of the reason, be thoughtful. But we had the agreement here this morning, uh. County judge, he decided. Mr. Schumacher, the president, the Mars Fire Corporation, he decided at the end of the meeting. I'll give a copy of the sign that they will not put the dreams of the D P A for them into the application, they're saying. So. To be had, uh, the convention, application of being period. This project. Did it be successful? You have a smart date, February the morning, twenty twenty six, right? So, uh, that you may have it, you can now then. That's the one they say, the T D A would submit the contract to the county. Award the county's a bunch, let's keep the contract. At that time, you've got twenty four months to take the factor. So we'd be looking at February first, January thirty two, twenty twenty eight. Please, I want to add, did we, uh, twenty four months out there. So, the question, the question with the judge. Audience, the question from the farm, you won't find out, you'll learn to already learn. Yeah, well. January thirty, when you physically leave the smart date. Or you'll find out that, so you avoid the fire than that. If, if we're successful, getting great. How will it take to know those successful? There's a two year body that may be probably six months, first six months, we probably see some activity there. Well, not regular, we don't want to report successfully. When they give us a, 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 a lot of questions, who do we find out? I'm saying about that, my first, twenty twenty six, you forgot the question. Guy, you'll feel you're right now. That's possibly that is, and I can be, and we can be, it's probably after, I think you're in for it. And you can get it happening, you know, like. I guess, but it's, it's, if you have to surprise guys, I don't have to be too confident. Still actively doesn't mean it's. And besides. And I always have, you know, the box, the water. Yeah. I think you, the, the, our community control, if you can give a great, not medium. When you just say once the structure is completed, that. The women will water, supply, operations, and plan is irresponsible for the many months in the. Because of the problem, okay? Yes, you got it. Jim Schumacher, the president, water supply, the Anthony United Center. He think that then.
No, we just appreciate y'all making this available for us and, and others. That's it, go thank her.
Good. Only one here. Any other question? It's going to provide the residents out there a lot of, uh, mobility. They maybe had a lot of, of. Evidence that they're going on for practical water and, and uh, no. Make you concerned there about being harder to achieve the possible. Maybe can't believe until we get the way the D A. I don't want to thank the new board, but communication, there's, communication would matter, that's about it, that was happening. Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, little crew, as you all know, I've been advocating for the valley states for uh. Quite a good time and I got the honor over the last few months to actually contract to do some work out there at the water supply corporation. And I want to acknowledge the work that Joe Schumacher has done to get the valley states to this point. Uh, it was through his advocacy and his hard work and his hard questions that uh, there was a more turnover. And uh, things are looking really good out there, but you have challenges, but now because more is actively engaged. They're addressing those issues quickly in terms of leaks and problems out there, so I think they're going to be able to manage. Until the time that the grant is awarded and the work then began. I also want to say that uh, I didn't know a lot about the valley states communities and I need to tell you, it is filled with hardworking. Uh, proud people, residents that uh, care about the community, want to improve it. Uh, and it's very exciting to me to see what's going on and I want to thank the valley county commissioners for, for choosing this project. Cause I know you have to make decisions about a lot of areas in the county. And I'm glad that this time the valley states takes the benefit of the semi wild grant, thank you.
Anything else, Paul? You've heard the request from the resolution. We agreed, we said, why don't you go ahead and agree. Mr. The Pies is your second, and Mr. Eagle, the specimen. All in favor of the act?
I.
Posed, when you carry, I'm the ninth, consider act upon sanctuary resolution. For the project, the government is passing an application, all. Again, uh, Mr. Murphy knew, the city recovery resolution. A B C company, land, very, impolite. But at any time, in position, now we can name the individual. But two position, now we've signed certain contract to the copy. Uh, signing all the, uh, copying things, the place funds to out the portion of the. Make forward, and early as many. Order. Name the county judge as the authorized official of the county to sign over the contract, having informed. So when that application comes to the county, can you tell you tolerate all the, I think, hang on. Two individuals have your best ones, the pay for contract with the payment class, and all the seniority thought call. Your first first ones, D D A, they don't know that properly, you get around seventy eight, seventy completely. Commending the county judge, also the county judge, who offer that, took the voice to request some time, so. First to me, the question for them. And also, I should, I should, I should, be authorized here for. You heard the explanation of the request, have any question you want? Is your motion to approve? First of all, this is your second. Second, first of parties discussion. All in favor of the act?
I.
Posed, when you carry, thank you, Paul. On number ten, is we consider act upon the dentists, and you should have a gun, sure, it's obviously contract, as we said. I should be quite that.
Judge, thank you, fair, stand aside.
More, Judge, commissioners, right? So, uh, just want to brief you on an S C C rumble. That mandates uh, what has been affected with the phone, phone rates and correction facilities. And this will be throughout the state, so we need to know, we are, our recent contract. Uh, and I'm here, where you're asking that if the event that contract secures. I guess, it allows game of plan to be, uh, S C C mandates.
And, and then those watching the contract.
So, we're in the contract, we were giving twenty cents a minute, because of the, of the ruling, and from nine cents. Uh, the money, the provision will be made on that, so.
So, rightly, what you're saying is the only challenge in.
Yes.
Question. We do want to indicate we're going to lose fifteen thousand dollars a month. I do need you to understand that. As a result of this unfunded federal mandate.
We're losing fifteen thousand.
Correct. Now, not just us, anyone else who uses F C C, uh. Equipment in a jail facility where we're selling to inmates.
So this is across the state.
It's not just your valve and ribbons, yeah.
Well, since reduction. Where's the fifteen thousand?
Absolutely. You were in your packets, I believe the judge gave each of you this, uh, copy of the.
There's no one on the side, can you think about, correct, and it's definitely. That's all we ended, we just didn't want.
Thank you.
I was curious, yeah, little crew, the, the charges to the inmates, is, is that to cover telephone cost? Internet cost, whatever it is that they're using for communication. Uh, or is that just uh, revenue that would come into the county because the service was being provided to the inmates?
It works the same as your personal cell phone, you're paying for airtime. That's what they're doing. And now the, the government, the larger government has decided that we cannot charge inmates for their airtime. Because they're incarcerated.
Any other question? Is your motion to, I'm scared, you said this immediately. Mr. Eagle, was your second? I'll say, Mr. Wise, in the session. All in favor of the act? I oppose, when you carry, and you show you, on number eleven, is you're setting an act on presentation of initial draft of twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. You have a chance to study, you have the point today, the initial draft is ready. I'm actually, we're part of the day. I actually take that, we view it. And conversation with your audience, any questions you have, if you want to, come to me, visit us, and there's reason for. So, sir, for your review, the next couple of weeks before we get back on to, and also, I ask you to follow your. Plan and calendar and give the method for the budget, document process. You have that also, thank you.
Yeah, little crew. I hope that the draft budget is put on the website as soon, as soon as possible out of this meeting, so that the public can begin to read it. That budget, I'm always with the commissioners' court. I also am concerned that the calendar does not provide the same, uh, public community and workshops that you have provided in the past. I'm disappointed at, I felt by commissioners that uh, had indicated they would lobby the court for that to happen. Not sure how the decision was made, but uh, very disappointed about the fact that there's no public forum for the. Citizens of this county, the taxpayers of this county, to be able to sit down and listen to your conversations. Hear from your department heads about the needs uh, that they have with their budget. I'm also concerned about the fact that uh. Continually, this court refuses to look at the fact that you have. Uh, a couple of departments in the county that was seeing almost below poverty wage to wages. How is that possible when you have other departments that are uh, having clerks paid, frontline staff paid quite well. Uh, their morning salary plus their stipends, but we have uh, two departments that I know, uh, county clerk and district clerks that get very little wage. And this court, for some reason, does not seem to be able to find the money in order to increase those wages. I hear over and over in this court that the department heads have the ability to, to ask you. To allow them to allocate their budgets in a way that they see most fit. And to ask you for additional dollars if they need them. They're elected officials, they should have the ability, the authority, the power to ask them that. And as their peers, you honor that request, especially if they justify the reason for that request. That over and over and over, this court refuses to do the right thing, I don't understand why. If you're able to find money in your budgets every year to give yourselves longevity raises, longevity bonuses for any problem. You could buy money to pay the people that are primary breadmothers in their households and are fairly making it sweet, thank you.
No, I, I don't have a calendar in front of me, but is there any way you can get money to have a few? We do have, you do have a calendar, that shows that we do have a budget, uh, carrying, such a setup. Which has already been given, and they'll get what's on the, you know. Very, very short, but we don't have anything said, look to the demon, not self survival. Is there any way you can, that's, we can, yeah, but, uh. We need that more of most right now, and I just want, and I, we have nothing, so I'm actually, I'm believing that, uh, Lou. Perhaps, perhaps we can, we can discuss that, I think, I mean, well, is considered act upon the treasury force.
For example, this one. This uh, portion of the day, the fifth, which is June seventeen. Uh, the blade road on three twenty nine, three thirty one, three thirty, uh, three thirty five, twenty four, bad. Four ten, four twelve, uh, getting passionate, I don't. All out of county, but uh, manning on four twenty four, okay. I mean, nothing, uh, three twenty seven. Gun crash, oh, no, no, no. Three forty, three fifty four, five, six, eight, six nine, six four, six three, it looks tough. Been fixed the washouts, uh. And fix the washouts, uh.
Sorry, where they, two.
I get, wait, no, washout. But, uh, uh, Gero's field, six, three, seven, wait, three twelve, three. The roof was moved to the Gero's three twenty nine, three, four, ten, four, those. Uh, we removed sand, earth, trucking, Gero's, three twenty nine, and relocated, relocated dirt into an interbot field. Sand across them, the spitting up the gravel, all on the Gero's four twelve. As a result of the recent strong, uh, winds, better rain, though, we cut the move trees. Uh, the freedom of roads increasing to two. Eighteen roads increasing to three. Most of the paraplacs, and the justice center. I don't know, it's a lot of pressure, of work. Been burning the other, the county, or. Also assisted the city, the city of San Mal Street Department, clearing up those streets, someone, they got four up there, you know. And I'm monitoring, super, uh, all, work out, and, and. Questions, you need, first, you need to name. There's a large acceptance report.
So. Mr. Yagel, you're second, I need the party, discussion. On the favor, say aye, aye, pose, on the period, like, the day, I'm, thirteen, is considered an act on that, the, 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 the. The fourteen is considered an act upon, a little month, four. The margin will play the group. I like the motion, but, but, Mr. Forrest, is it second? Okay, Mr. Yagel, discussion. On the favor, say aye, aye, pose, was compared, and the fifteen is considered an act on, 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 on.